Okay, thank you, Hartley. Good evening, everyone. This is Laura Schifferin. I'm chairing Planning Board this evening, May 20th, calling the order, calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hawes is present.
Andrew Shepherd present.
And Laura Schifferin present. Also with us is Chaz, our liaison to the Board of Selectmen. Welcome, Chaz.
Thank you, President.
And Beth, our admin is... And Jessica will be joining us, is our anticipation. And I believe there's somebody else on, but I think I'll go on with our preliminaries here. Okay, if you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. I'd like to thank all of our veterans and current military, pray that they will all be safe, and our first responders. We need them almost daily, especially today. The meeting is being recorded and will appear, will be uploaded to the Town of Townsend YouTube channel. One point for Chairman's additions or deletions. I do have a few things this evening. First, I would like to spread some good news. And that is, if you'll remember, we did apply for what's called the UPWP grant through MRPC. And it is about the corridor analysis of Edward Road to Proctor Roads. We've discussed this before, and we're lucky enough to be included. And they're going to reach out to us, but the program should be starting by October 1st, and it will end, hopefully be done by the end of September of 2025. So that's awesome. Our tax dollars at work and our efforts of asking for grants happening.
Well, Madam Chair, if I could go a little further to say that it was also the state rep and the state senator that put letters of support behind that as well.
Yes, and you as well, our Board of Selectmen as well. Yeah, joint effort, for sure.
Yep.
And we thank them for their participation. Next, what we didn't have on the agenda but has come in at the beginning of May is a request for a representative from the Planning Board to serve on the MJTC as a Planning Board rep. In the past couple of years, Beth has been doing this for us. And I did speak with her. She is willing to do it again. She's been very good at filling us in on what's going on there and also giving them feedback from Townsend. So unless there's another member that would like to serve, okay. I will entertain a motion, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion that Beth Faxon be our representative to the MJTC.
I'll make the motion to make, to appoint Beth Faxon as the liaison to the MJTC for the Planning Board.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Beth. Carol Hawes is yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Laura Schifferin, yes. The second appointment that we need to MRPC is from the Planning Board as well. And I've been serving in that position for a number of years. And unless somebody else would like to take that over, I'm happy to fulfill those duties for Planning Board.
I'll make a motion to appoint Laurie Schifferin as the Planning Board Representative to MRPC.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing seeing none. I'll entertain a roll call vote. Or take the roll call vote.
And thank you, Laurie, for doing that. Carol Hawes is yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
Okay, and Laura Schifferin, yes. And Beth, you'll report those appointments to the agencies? And, okay. And then 1.5... Oh, also, as when I'm on MRPC, I'm currently chairing, don't know what's going to happen for July, but I also serve as the Chair on the MPO, which meets monthly, and it's a transportation updates on that. So next would be our minutes. We have received minutes for and reviewed, they're in the portal, March 11th, 2024, April 1st, 2024, April 29th, 2024. May 6th is not in our portal, has not been reviewed. So I would like to move that to our next meeting of June 10th, if that pleases the Board. Okay. Other than that, do you want to take them individually? Beth, did you make the edits to the, that were sent?
Yeah, you're right. The one that you sent, yeah.
Okay. That was on, that was on the 24th, the, excuse me, April 1st ones. A public hearing where there was, it was more like repeating a couple of paragraphs. Not sure what's going on there. So, what's your pleasure?
Can we just do them collectively?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 11th, 2024, April 1st, 2024, and April 29th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, comments? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hawes is yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schifferin, yes. Thank you very much. And thank you, Beth, for all the work on that. That was a lot. 1.6, advertised Planning Board member vacancy. Is that for the, that's for the one that wasn't filled this election, correct?
Yes.
And how many years was that?
It's, the term expires at the following April annual town election, where the individual can then run for a seat. And then you can run for, for an open seat.
Okay. And we had talked about the fact that there were some scattered votes. And Jessica was going to reach out to them?
Yeah, that hasn't been done yet, but we're planning on sending a letter to those individuals.
Okay, and I'll keep the Board updated with that. But do you want to vote? Do we have to vote to advertise the vacancy?
No, it's already posted.
Okay.
Yep, it's posted for 10 days, and at this point, we're looking for volunteer response forms for individuals who are interested.
Okay. So we just have, just a few minutes before the public hearing gets continued here or resumed. Chaz, you had sent out a memo, was in our correspondence, in reference to liaisons to the Boards. I guess there was some confusion as to what your intent was. I thought that you wanted feedback on how we felt about the liaison process and, and the help that we were receiving or not receiving kind of thing. Was it something other than that?
No, it was, I'm in the process of setting up the assignments for the following year. And I just wanted to find out from all the Boards and Committees and Commissions how they feel the process is going, if there's any comments or concerns, and what we can do to improve the process. So it was really just, you know, I needed some kind of feedback.
Okay, so I understood it. And I think that we don't want to lose you as our liaison. So can I make that point?
So noted, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
You sound unanimous in that as well.
Yes, we are, we are. We are.
No, there, I've kind of broke the mold on several different things, meaning that just because it's been tradition doesn't necessarily mean that it's a good, it's a good tradition. I know that I've been following all of the Boards for the three years that I've been a Selectman. I've been trying to, Joe also has been the same way since he was a Selectman before and Selectman again. And I just feel that having, having a shift at the end of the year, we have a lot of things started, and I'll give you a prime example. The UPWP is something that we discussed when I was on the Planning Board before I was even Selectman. So to get it on to a point where we could actually ask for a grant took us a good three years, you know? And now we have to wait until we get it on the tips. Once we get it on the tips, then we can start seeing if we can get a grant to, you know, find out if we can actually afford to fix some of the things that they suggest in that grant. So I just think it's valuable for, for, you know, you guys to have the same liaison for a longer period of time than just one year, and that's just my opinion.
I'd have to agree, and I, I think that speaks volumes for serving on Boards prior to becoming Selectmen. I think that you have, you know, a lot more background in how to deal with things. My personal opinion. Okay, so now we are at, I'd like to stand, I've got a few minutes here, like three minutes, so...
Well, Madam Chair, I just, and I just want to back up in, as far as advertising for the vacancy and stuff, because I promised Beth that I would do my best to, to do this PSA. It's not only, you know, putting it on the, posting the vacancy, and, you know, I announce it on the Selectmen's meetings as well. I'm going to be having a conversation with the rest of the Board tomorrow in regards to what we can do collectively to start getting more active volunteers. And part of it is, we need to find out what's broken in the system so that we can figure out what we need to do to fix what's going on. Is it the timetable involved, the amount of hours that it takes for volunteers? If it means that we need to assess in each area and say, to be a volunteer for planning, you would need, I don't know, eight hours a week or four hours a week? We need to set a timeframe so that we can give a more accurate figure to the individuals involved. I also think that we have to create an environment where people actually want to come and volunteer. And that means that we all need to get along, we all need to, you know, have decorum and all of that kind of stuff. So think about, you know, what you guys as a, as a Board would, would want to do to kind of exercise some kind of the way to market the open positions. And we'll do whatever you feel is necessary. I know that with Beth, we are putting it on, we have it on TCAM. We have it on, we're going to be announcing it at the Selectmen's meetings. But we really have to do some kind of internal recruitment to get people on. So there you go, Beth, that's my, that's my big shot.
Thank you.
I believe that ours is not the only vacancy.
Yeah, we do, we do have a lot. We could definitely use the townspeople's help.
Yeah. And that's where it comes down to, everybody just does a little, you know? It'll be to the benefit of everyone, but... Now, just a minute away. And I don't know what can be that quick, actually, from what we have. So it is now 6:45 PM. And I will call to order the continuation of the hearing for 108 and 110, West Meadow Road, major stormwater management permit application. I'll introduce the Board members. And I'm going to have a self-introduction of the Board members that are here, and we do have a quorum.
Carol Hawes is present.
Andrew Shepherd, present.
And Laura Schifferin, present. There's a sign-in sheet, but I don't know that there's any, if there's any people in...
110 is here, 108 is on his way. He's coming.
Yeah, we do have, I don't know if there are any in the audience. I'm not the audience, but at the hearing, the audience.
Okay, and then we have the engineer on and we have the applicant on. All right. I have a lot of papers, so excuse me. So we've received the materials from both the applicant and the consultant. And the applicant now has a copy of that, right, Phil? And Chris, do you both have copies of what the engineer has sent?
Correct, yeah, we do have the, the letter dated May 15th with the final review.
Okay. So there are still some things missing on that. And we're, we can discuss some of that and the peer review, if you like. Where, I do not see that we will be in a position to make a decision this evening because of some of the outstanding items. But I'll give you the floor.
Okay, we can, I guess, do you want me, well, I guess, what do you want me to say? I can go through the items, but from a design perspective, GEI has reviewed it, and I believe they've given their blessing from a design perspective. We do have the few things that we were discussing at the last meeting. The easement on 108, on behalf of 110, that is in the lawyer's hands currently. The lawyers have drafted the easement language. They, I believe they have sent it to the property owner's lawyer for 108. And they're in the process of reviewing that and going back and forth on that.
Okay, is that, is that the item that you sent dated May 2nd? That's, no, that's the requested waiver.
That's the requested waiver, yes. Yeah, the requested waiver is because this was put in prior to your revisions, and Jessica can remind me exactly. Basically, the waiver is, we're, we're requesting a waiver for an easement to the town because in your new bylaw, it's implied that with the permit, that's what the waiver is.
Yeah.
So that's that one. I guess the easement, their lawyers are right now hashing that out. And the revised O and M documents are, Phil can correct me on this. Has Phil submitted, have you submitted those, Phil?
I don't think so.
No, they haven't, 108 hasn't reviewed them yet.
Okay, so 108 has to review them, and there, we do have a letter for 108. Hopefully, they can review that and sign it, which is an acknowledgement that states that they know that the town has the legal right to access the property to do the maintenance on the basins. I think that was, I'm going to look through the letter here. Other than that, I, like I said, I do know GEI was satisfied with the design itself. But we can, we can talk about, I guess, whatever you folks want to talk about, have any other questions?
I asked a question, and my neighbor's coming. So hi, Phil, Lisa's here. One of the things that we're a little bit confused about is that as we look at the drawings, I haven't seen the design of what's being done, which I trust you all to do all that, that's not the question. You know, Phil and I had talked previously about 108 and 110 sharing responsibility, which we have no problem with either. However, with the drawing as it looks right now, it looks like it sits on 108, but when you look at the property lines and where it actually is right now, it sits on 110. So I'm a little confused as to where everything sits, and if somebody could just kind of explain that, that would be great. George is on his way, just so everybody knows. And like I said, we have no problem with any of the work being done, but we don't know what's being done. I don't know what's being done, I should say that. And here he comes.
And you're the owner of?
I'm the owner of 110.
Okay, great, thank you.
And here's George for 108.
I am, I'm with you. I need it.
So that's what we're just trying to figure out, you know, property lines and such, as we talked about. It looks like it, and Phil, correct us if we're wrong too, it looks like it sits on 110, not 108. Yes, so this is me, this is him, but when you look at the drawing, it looks like it sits here, not...
So Lisa, those are, those are temporary winter basins. Those aren't the...
Okay.
The engineer and Mr. Stoddard.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Stoddard's coming out, hopefully this week if he can, to stake where the potential plans are going now. And I don't know if that, physically on the property, I'm not sure if this, it's an imaginary line that's on the ground, but there's stakes. Like, it's hard for you to tell where the property line is. I know it's at the bottom of the hill, but yeah, it's kind of hard to dictate that.
Yeah, and this week, I believe Wednesday, we're heading out there, we're going to stake out the location of those basins. So everybody...
So excuse me for a minute, but it's going to shift to the left, towards closer to my, or onto my property? Is that how it's going? So I understand it.
Yeah, so both of, I guess I'll talk, all three of them, but let's talk about the ones in the back, because that's, it seems to be what we're talking about. Oh, I can, yeah, can I do that?
Sorry.
Can you share a screen?
I'm just trying to get that now, yeah, yeah, good point. Maybe you would like to see the reverse.
Okay, who would like their screen shared?
I will, in just a moment, Hartley.
Okay.
I should be locked in, so go ahead and...
Yeah, so okay, give me a, give me a second, Beth.
Is someone joining the line? Which is similar to mine.
So while you're looking at the plans, and Hartley is getting a screen share going.
Yeah, okay.
Jessica?
Yes.
Can I ask you to give a recap, please?
Yeah, sure. So at the last meeting, we just got a brief overview of the project and the history of the project. That being that this is a retroactive filing for a major stormwater management permit for the tree clearing across the three properties, 108, 110, and 112. Topographically, how the site is situated with drainage and runoff, the engineer is proposing that stormwater treatment primarily occurs in the back of House Lot Number 108, as we can see. So action items that came out of the last hearing were some plan revisions that were requested by our peer reviewer to be made to that stormwater erosion and sediment control plan. We had the peer review completed of that second revised plan, which we've already talked about tonight. We're up to speed on all hard copies administratively of things. And then, yeah, the biggest action item that was taken away that Chris started talking about was just sort of the legal review of the drainage and all the properties and the access agreements due to the fact that these two properties are now under private ownership. But the permit is still being filed for by the developer. So we have had no luck getting in touch with town council, but I was able to speak with our town administrator. So as Chris had already summarized earlier in this hearing, the access between the two, back and forth between the two properties, drainage between 108 and 110 would be done privately between those two owners. But then the license to enter should be presented by the developer, but agreed upon by the developer, whomever will be the owner and operator of those stormwater basins moving forward, and the town. So that's sort of where we're at tonight. And then we can see those two, where the two proposed basins are going to be relative to what's out there now.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate that. I think that really tells us where we are. And are there any other questions from those in the audience tonight that can be clarified for you? Because we won't be able to vote on this tonight until we get the remainder of the information.
Just a, you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I kind of do. So Jessica, kind of going back to what you just said, so as 108 is my property, right? So the basins will be on my property. So going forward, how will, who will be responsible to maintain them?
So the information that we received in the office shows that you will be responsible. So that is something that you and, you and Phil will need to hash out behind the scenes, of course. But what we can do is just provide you with the information as to what it means to be a, an operator and the maintenance manager of these two basins. So it's not just, you know, a summer endeavor. It's, it's into perpetuity is how our bylaws and our, our regulations are written. So there's annual reporting requirements. You know, there's seasonal mowing and cleaning out of the basins as needed. So what we can do is, sorry, my son's right next to me. What we can do is we can send you the town regulations that outline what your responsibilities will be. And that way, you and Phil and any lawyers needed can sit down and go through it all to make sure everyone's on the same page.
And I have that here.
Okay, but in reality, runoff from 110 is still going to be coming onto my property? Is that true?
Based on how the plans show it, I believe part of the runoff from, I think, the driveway and then sort of like the right side of her house, if we're looking at this map on the screen right now, that will be graded so that it runs down into the, to the rainwater garden on the left.
So Jessica, I can add on to that. So that is true. Part of the water from 110 does enter 108. But after it goes through the basin, part of 108's water goes back onto 110 and discharges to the BVW that's down off the property. So while his, their water does enter your property, at some point, your water ends up going back onto their property as well.
So is this a shared issue? Is that kind of what you're suggesting?
Yeah, so that's really the reason for, the catalyst for the easement. Because 110's water does enter 108's. And I'm sorry, I'm not using you, I'm just, it's easier for me to stay by the property number.
Yeah, no, that's...
Giving 110 access to clean that basin is really the, is the way the water is flowing, that's the reason for that easement.
They have our permission, that's fine. We're there.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that.
And in all honesty, I mean, basins is kind of a weird term. These are really rain gardens, so they're very shallow. They have some nice plantings and some flowers and bushes and bark mulch. It's kind of, it would look like any other little, I'll call them pop-up gardens that you would put around your property. It, you know, I hate when we use the term basin, I don't want you to think it's a four-foot hole in the earth. It's definitely not that. We try to make it real gentle slopes, you know, nice plantings and wood chips to make it, obviously, you have to look at these. So we want them to be aesthetically pleasing as well.
And once you install them, they're inspected?
Yes.
Correct.
But here's the, there is the operation and maintenance plan.
But it is something that I will need to fill out paperwork per year on this?
Yes, there's an annual report checklist right there. And the regulations for maintenance and operation in perpetuity.
Okay.
And those are great.
I just want to chime in, I was trying to meet up with Mr. Campbell last week. Our schedules just didn't align. I have a packet for him to go over and look at all this stuff we're kind of discussing. Our schedules just didn't align. I have a packet for him to go over and look at all this stuff we're kind of discussing now. So I'm going to actually, say it again.
I just want to let you know that I did give him a copy of the operation and maintenance plan that you submitted as part of this application. It's public record at this point. And also a copy of the annual inspection checklist. Um, a copy of the operation and maintenance plan agreement that you had brought in the other day.
Yep, that's all the stuff we had.
With his name on it. Okay. So I just want to let you know what I gave him tonight.
Okay.
I think if you don't mind, guys, just the overall gist of this is, you know, it's easy just to put somebody's name down on the O and M plan, but there is quite a bit of responsibility that comes with it. So the planning board ultimately is going to be issuing this permit to Phil, but saying that George will be responsible ultimately for it in the future. So we just want to make sure from the town's perspective, when we issue a permit, that everyone that's involved in it, whose names are in there, whose signatures are on it, understands what their responsibilities are. So that's, that's what we want to give you guys a couple more weeks, um, until the June planning board meeting to, to hash through all this and, and just make sure you understand what your responsibilities will be.
So I'm going to throw something else out also is now our, our house is in trust. So am I going to be the one filling this form out going forward, or will it be our, our trustee, if you will?
I do not know the answer to that.
Yeah.
A legal question.
Yeah.
I think, um, you, you mentioned that you have your own land use attorney on board with this part right now. So that might be a good question to start with them. And if that's something that, you know, maybe you're comfortable taking the lead on this moving forward, that, that's probably for you guys to decide.
With a simple fact, you know, and we're not trying to hold out progress or anything else. And, you know, we have full faith in, in Phil. There's no issue with that. It's more of, you know, just making sure that legally we're moving forward correctly, and especially with the trust. You know, just to make sure that that's resolved. Yeah. Okay, that's good that we're moving forward in terms of, you know, delaying a little bit here. They have time to go over it. And yeah, I would like to meet with you, Phil. Yeah, absolutely.
Phil, when are you coming by?
Say it again.
When are you coming by to see George?
I can't do it tomorrow, but whenever George is available, I know he had some, some stuff that took precedent. But if you have all that stuff that, that Beth just gave, I'm going to just email this to the attorney and so they can circle it through the attorney's emails.
Yeah, that would be good.
If it's going to attorney anyways, it's just going to get all emailed over to them tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Beth, for making sure that that packet was there for, um, 110. Appreciate that.
Trying to have a screen share now. Technical difficulties here, sorry. Be good to get a copy of this part.
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of the second page here?
Beth, do you think we'd be able to share second page copy with them or email them?
We have this, we don't have this.
Oh, uh, yeah, I should have an extra copy, then just.
I can, I can, are you talking about the plan set? I can, when I come up, when, when I come up, yeah, the revised one, when I come up Wednesday, I can bring you both a set of plans.
Okay.
The only thing about Wednesday, Phil, um, I can't guarantee that. Um, my wife Melanie is recuperating from surgery, so I'm not sure how she's going to feel at that time. And sadly, I have something, um, on Thursday, so it may be really next week.
That's fine. Yeah, honestly, it, you know, it's, we want to work around your schedule. So whatever works for you folks, um, we can make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
And can Mr. Stoddard come out and still mark the?
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's all, it was just.
Yes.
Yeah, mark, mark those and then I can.
Okay, then, then what I do is I can, I'll bring a set of cop, uh, plans, the revised copies to both of you. I'll just throw them in your mailbox or anything. So I don't, you know, I don't want to disturb anybody up there, so.
That works.
Roger that. Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Okay, so from your discussions, I just want to make sure that, number one, you've asked all your questions. And number two, do you feel that June 10th is going to give you enough time?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, then I'm good with entertaining a motion to continue until 6:45 PM on June 10th, this hearing.
Hi, can I chime in?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, that's Phil.
Okay, Phil.
Uh, that's my son's fourth birthday and we, I won't be able to attend that. Uh, can Chris do it? Or do I need to be around?
I'll, I'll, I'm available. I can be there.
Sorry, we're, we're currently planning his big birthday party.
That's okay. Um, we have another meeting in June, if that, if you.
No, we'll, we'll just get it done. I want to get this wrapped up. I'll, if, even if I have to come on with, I can, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just that, that date just came into my head.
I'm, I'm glad. I really am that you remember it.
That's a big one.
Okay, so I have heard a motion to continue until 6:45 PM on June 10th, 2024. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, vote please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes. Thank you to all the participants.
Thank you. Have a good night, folks.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, um, going into work session now. Uh, 3.1, master plan, review accomplishments, discuss implementation. We have not been prepared to do anything further on the master plan tonight, but I did want to mention that, um, any boards report on the zoning bylaw change that was approved at the town meeting. I received a couple of calls actually from attorney with comments from the engineer that had presented this of how thorough the report was and how all issues were addressed to defend our position, if you will. And they had nothing that they had to say. So I thought, wow, okay. I don't usually get that compliment, so let's, um, let's use that as a template. You know, that we check, get all those points and any questions that have been answered. And honestly, it came from questions that people, you know, stated in the public hearing that we should know the answers to. And so that's how everything, uh, that's how important the public hearings are too, for us to hear what questions are out there and address them before and have the answers for any meeting where the vote is going to take place. So that would be the only, anybody else have comments on 3.1? No. 3.2, Townsend MBTA Community Zoning Act Compliance Update. Uh, we did get, uh, something in our port, portal from MRPC.
Yeah, that's the scope of services for the D L T A.
Right, and.
Been executed, um, and I don't think there are any action items for the planning board at this time, so.
Okay, 3.3, review bylaw changes, 145, 36 accessory apartments that, I mean, it was approved the way it was on the warrant.
Yeah.
So, and MRPC will be at the June 10th meeting.
Exactly. So that would be preparing and understanding what, you know, amendments were proposed and approved, rather, at town meeting, so you can continue working on the bylaw with MRPC as your consultant. So the kickoff meeting for that, uh, effort is June 10th, at your edge of.
Do they, okay, so we just booked a hearing for 6:45. Do we have a time for them to come that evening?
Nothing has been set yet, so if you have a preference, um, I can, you know, communicate that to the, um, this gentleman, is Joseph Boyle coming from MRPC?
I'm just thinking maybe 7:30, well, 7:15 or 7:30 because that should give us enough time to get through. Do, I mean, tell him in between that time, because we might be done by 7:15.
Okay, all right.
And this way he doesn't have to hang around or, you know what I mean? We're not timing him up either, but he doesn't have to come before that either.
Yes.
Okay.
Would there be any other invitees to that? Do you have any other individuals or, I mean, he's specifically, in the scope, it specifically says planning board meeting, but I'd, you know, be happy to extend invitations to other boards or members, staff.
I would say certainly, um, housing, housing authority, the housing trust. And, um, CHAS, of course.
Zoning.
Zoning.
Yep.
Yeah, I was going to say zoning, so. Uh, okay, does that sound good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, um, Beth has been really busy, so I don't think we need a formal report from you unless you wanted to mention something under 4.1.
Yeah, I just want to mention that all stormwater management permits are, um, up to date. Other than Campbell Farm, we are kind of waiting on a couple of reports from, from that uh, project, which I'll be reaching out to them tomorrow. Tomorrow, we have a couple of site visits planned. Uh, we're going to 27 Scales Lane. As the board recalls, um, you had extended that stormwater permit and there was work, uh, to be done. Well, it's been completed, so we're going out tomorrow to, to meet with Mr. King on site. And then after that, we will be going over to the water treatment plant where they're starting work on the bio retention plan for that stormwater management permit, which is also being monitored by the planning board. And finally, we'll probably take a ride over to 94 Fitchburg Road where they're installing the final bio retention pond of that system. It's a very complex system and they've been doing a great job, um, getting it installed and, uh, it's working well. We've been monitoring, you know, they've been great about keeping in contact with our department to let us know when different parts of the system are coming online. So we've been able to, to work very well with them. So that's my stormwater report.
I'll also add in, we're going to do a pre-con visit to 66 Bayberry Hill Road tomorrow, also.
Thank you. Yeah, we got a busy day. Putting our feet on. In mosquito spray.
And while you're talking about things that have been going on, anything, have you received anything on 22 Main Street?
As of now, nothing, no.
Okay, so there's a deadline. Was that June?
Yeah, that was June 20th, uh, 30th. Uh, Jessica, do you have plans to reach out again, or we, where are we?
Yeah, because I would think we would want to discuss whatever at the, um, June 24th meeting.
Right, yeah, I mean, we can reach out. I know that both land use and the building department have been in touch and have reminded that owner numerous times of what is still outstanding. But I don't think we've really received any feedback or status updates. So I think probably the best we can do is, um, just a, another courtesy check-in and reminding her that her construction schedule is currently set to expire on June 30th.
Okay. 4.2, Andrew, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I have one notice from the town capital. Let's see. Public hearing on June 3rd, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Uh, application submitted by Next Grid Inc., DBA Wax Myrtle Solar LLC on behalf of Lord &amp; Properties LLC, requesting a special permit, major site plan review, and land disturbance permit to permit the construction of a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic bo- bo- voltaic array and battery, battery energy storage system, DESS, encompassing approximately 33 acres and approximately 46.95 of the approximately 46.95 acre site. Uh, property is also located within the Wellhead Protection Zone 2 overlay district. The Wellhead Protection Zone 1 overlay district is located northwest of the parcel. Uh, Wellhead Protection Zone 1 surrounds Bemis Road, well number one. Property is currently undeveloped and consists of forested woodland. The subject property is located at the intersection of Bemis Road and Lord &amp; Lane and is owned by Lord &amp; Properties LLC. The subject property is shown on tax map three as parcels 30-1 through 30-21 and is located within the rural residential zoning district. If you'd like more information, you can see the Pepperell Planning Board, submitted by Al Patnaud Jr., Chair of the Pepperell Planning Board. And here is a very fuzzy picture. For all.
That's all right.
And this is.
Okay. All righty, 4.3, I'd like to mention that there, we have a special election for Friday, Tuesday, June 11th. Voting is 8 AM to 8 PM at Town Hall. 4.4, the select board memo regarding, oh, we had a little discussion on this already. Did you want to add anything to that? CHAS?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, didn't realize I was taking that out of order. When we discussed it. 4.5, uh, appointments, reappointments.
That's, it goes with 4.4.
Oh.
Or did they already select liaisons for chance to you through now chair? Have the liaisons been selected already by the board, by the select board?
We'll be doing that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
It'll be, the, the big reveal is tomorrow.
All righty, and are you revealing anything else tomorrow?
Um, I can't confirm or deny.
Okay, um, and then we have some educational information as sessions coming up. Historic preservation focus, that sounds just interesting, interesting. Um, and then the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative, spring workshops, if anybody's interested in that. And then, uh, next meetings are June 10th and June 24th at 6:30. And does anyone have anything else to add?
No.
I appreciate everyone's attention to tonight's details. Um, it was quite a bit to get ready for, and I appreciate that. So Jessica, thank you for your participation as well this evening. Entertainer motion to adjourn at 7:19 PM.
I'll make the motion to adjourn at 7:19 PM.
Second.
All right, we will call a vote.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes.